All right, welcome to our City Commission Candidate Forum in Leavenworth. And we have a few opening remarks from our party chairman, Jack Curtis.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jack Curtis, chairman and co-founder of United Kansas. I'd like to start by saying what an absolute honor it is to stand up here in front of all of you, here in the first city of Kansas. Leavenworth Hall is a special place in my heart because it is where I learned what exactly it means to be a Kansan. I'm not native to this community, but like so many members, was brought here through parents serving in the military. And it is through the greater community area of Lansing, Leavenworth, and Fort Leavenworth, we learned what it means to have Kansas hospitality, to want to work together, and a lot of the ideals that we've hoped to embody in United Kansas. It is our honor to be able to put on this forum today to have all of you speak about your ideals and goals for the future of Leavenworth City. And we're hoping that all of our individuals in the audience today are able to take something with them to learn what the future holds. We're so excited to be here today. Thank you all for taking time out to do this. We'll go ahead and turn it back over now to Aaron, who will go over the rules and expectations of the forum.
Thank you, Jack. We'll have a two-minute opening, and then the question, we have six questions identified covering governance and leadership, community priorities, housing and development, and public safety, quality of life, and collaboration and vision. And we'll start with the two-minute opening. We'll just work from right to left.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rebecca Hollister. I'm a candidate for Leavenworth City Commission. My, I first moved here in 2008. My dad was in the Army and my parents retired here. And so I've been here ever since. And I graduated from Leavenworth High School in 2017. I went off to college at Georgetown University in Washington DC. And it was there that I got sent home from COVID. And then I decided that while I was here, not able to go back, that Leavenworth was going to be my forever home. I really value servicing my community. I'm a part of CASA, LVY Arts, the Leavenworth County Humane Society, because I want to do for this community what it has done for me. And that's a big part of why I ran for Leavenworth City Commission. I want other people to be able to make the same choice that I have, to stay here in Leavenworth. I want it to be a prosperous, powerful choice for individuals to start a family, start a business, and live out the rest of their days. My main issues for my campaign are economic development. We need to make sure to increase our income, to widen the tax base, and lower the tax burden on individual residents. Affordable housing at all stages of life so that individuals can make sure that they can stay in their homes or find safe options from birth to death. And then public safety. This includes not just roads and infrastructure, but also things like the increasing fentanyl crisis, activities available for kids so that they stay out of trouble, and general crime, general crime rates. I really hope that everybody takes the time to read all of our information and vote on November 4th. I'm so grateful and excited for the opportunity to serve this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
You just haven't let her go first. Okay, Sam Maxwell the fourth. Just about me, born here, 1980 St. John Hospital. Lived here all my life, never moved away. Granted, I have traveled the US thanks to construction, which is, I'm your blue collar guy. Graduated Pleasant Ridge High School out there in Easton, 1999. Did thirteen years on the volunteer fire department with Kickapoo. Member of the Eagles, member of large of the Lions. I've done a lot in this community, with this community, for this community. I am also, like I said, your blue collar guy. I understand infrastructure better than most people do that are in City Hall or even sitting in there kind of directing things. I have lived it, I have done it. I've worked on many of the roads around here, Fourth Street being one of them. I was a project lead on that and Fourth and Eisenhower. I was a project lead on that. So I've done a lot of infrastructure in this town itself. And that's one of my key things is the infrastructure. The other key thing I've got is community development. I mean, without the people, we're not going to make it. So we gotta do what we can, how we can, to get people back here. Other than that, I mean, if you just ask me a question, I'm just here to get it done and move on. We're here to work. We're here to serve. We're here to make it better. Joe?
Thank you.
I'm Joe Wilson. I'm also running for City Commission. I too came here in 1985 with my parents. My father was stationed in Germany. And we came here and had no idea what Kansas was, or what Kansas was really, or why anybody would want to come here. And so, we got here. I graduated from Leavenworth High School in 92. I went through the JR OTC program, went to KU on an Army ROTC scholarship. And then I went to work for, served in the National Guard for about ten years. And I went to work for Lansing Correctional Facility for about a year. I then served with the Leavenworth County Sheriff's Office for almost ten, before I started my own business. I am a entrepreneur in our community. I sold my business in 2015. I went to work for large corporations at that time, doing IT work and IT management. C-level offices. Came back after COVID, back to our community. Found out what it was like to be gone, and how much I missed our community. Started another business, so I have a lot of experience in building businesses and growing businesses and managing large budgets. What I've seen in our community is a lack of growth. We've built twenty-eight homes in the last seven years in Leavenworth alone. We need to change that. We've seen our downtown on a decline. And I believe that's because we need to become pro-business, and we need to say that we're open for business. And then I've seen our first responders come here only to be wooed away by the larger departments elsewhere. So we need to be pro-first responder. So that's my platform, is pro-growth, pro-business, and pro-first responder.
Awesome, thank you. All right, we'll get into the questions, and you'll have ninety seconds for each of these. And we'll start with Sam as answering the first, and we'll go to the right and circle back. The first question's in the topic of governance and leadership. How would you ensure transparency and accountability in city government so residents feel their voices are being heard?
That's an easy one. Just call them. Talk to your commissioners, talk to your city staff. We're, we're supposed to be an open book no matter what. Certain things, yes, obviously, we cannot talk about in sort of an executive session, so to speak. But other than that, just talk to us. I will tell you whatever you want to know or what you need to hear. It's not, there's nothing to hide. We've got, we are on a decline, obviously. Our city infrastructure needs to work, obviously. So if you've got questions, concerns, just talk to us. That's what we're there for.
Thank you. Jim?
I think communication comes from trans, or transparency comes from communication. And so I think it's very important that we are very communicative with the public, whether it's with written notes of our meetings, town halls outside of the normal meetings, and just getting involved in the community and meeting with people to talk about what's going on. I'm always available. The number that I posted on my website and my flyers is my actual cellphone number. It's not a campaign number. Because even if I'm not in office, I still want to be able to help people, and I still will respond to people's concerns.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, I practice what I call active transparency. And for me, what that means is there's certainly a lot of the city documents that are public. The meeting minutes are public, there are videos, the budget is posted. That doesn't always mean it's accessible to the public. That doesn't always mean that the public knows where to find information and is, has an easy time interpreting it. So what I like to do is I like to go to the public. I have a video series called City in Sixty, where I summarize the latest City Commission meeting in sixty seconds or less. I will continue to do that, I suppose, for the rest of my life now, since I started it. So, lucky me, I'll continue to do that. I also do deep dives of budget breakdowns and affordable housing. I also plan on doing an accountability series, if elected, once a month, where I sort of give myself a grade based on what I hope to have accomplished and what I have accomplished in office, so that everybody can know exactly what we're up to and more about what the day-to-day life is like. Because that is super important, and it's, it's, you know, these forums are wonderful, but it's also not enough. We need to be actively making sure we go out to the public. And these guys do as well. We all were at, like Camp Leavenworth, for example. We've all been there talking to people about issues. So it's really important to not just have transparency be something that exists, but something that we continuously strive for, and as a tool to hold ourselves accountable.
Awesome, thank you. All right, this question will start with Joe, and it's in relation to community priorities. Infrastructure and public works are ongoing concerns in many Kansas communities. How would you prioritize investments in roads, water, and other essential services?
That's a great question. Our community is really struggling with some of these issues. We've got a number of storm sewers that are in disrepair. We've got sinkholes popping up. We've got roads with potholes. People complain about these things on a daily basis. The solution to this is, first, we need to increase the tax base so that we're bringing in more funds, so that we can begin to take care of these issues. Right now, the budget is very tight. And so it's difficult to address all of these issues in any type of fashion. So we need to increase our tax base by bringing in more businesses, bringing in more people into our community. Secondly, we need to prioritize maintaining what we have that is working, and then deciding what needs to be addressed next. It's not an easy issue. There are a number of things and a number of issues that have to be resolved. But most importantly, we need to make sure that we have a plan of how to attack them, and that we're not just Band-Aid fixing things. It's important to make sure that you're working a plan, just like you're troubleshooting a problem. And my line of work is understanding where, what needs to be done, and that you're using your resources effectively.
Rebecca?
Yeah, finances are a huge part of it, just like Joe said. If we don't have the money to fix things, then nothing is going to be able to change. When we prioritize infrastructure and the budget, we need to make sure that we're thinking about both the long term and the short term. We need to have long-term solutions for more stormwater projects. I know there's a wastewater treatment plant that needs to be galed from the ground up. We also need to make sure that we have the short term in mind. Emergency projects, like for example, the sinkhole at Six and Chestnut, continuing on to Six and Walnut. That thing is really crazy. If you look at it in person, it's pretty big. And it's very concerning. And, you know, I really do see it as a public safety issue. And so in terms of roads and infrastructure, we have the ability for residents to report potholes and report different things they see in the roads. But one issue I see that also relates to communication is that there's sort of no, no way of telling what projects are going to be coming up in terms of those smaller projects. There is hidden on the city website an area where you can go and see various stormwater projects. But I would love to see there be like a queue so that residents know when their project is up for grabs. So, yeah, we definitely need to work with people like Sam as well to have set plans for infrastructure issues, and we need to be transparent about it as well.
Thank you. Sam?
Basically, every question you're going to ask today is going to revolve around community development. That is the key thing to fixing our problems. We have to grow. If you don't have the money to do it, you're not going to do it. It's just, that's just as simple as it's going to get. We are on a decline of people, so we have stripped down basically every entity we have to bear down to the City Hall, up to including the service center. You have $2 million for, roughly, for what's used for a mill and overlay project a year, which is fantastic. It helps out with our road longevity and that kind of thing. We have stormwater fees that we've been charging here now lately, I think, the last couple of years, which is revenue for stormwater because of our failing storm systems. The amount of money it costs to do one storm project, it's just because of the industry standards now. It's, it's almost hard to believe. $200 to $300 a foot, depending on the size of the pipe. You get up to seventy-two inch, which is a six-foot pipe, that's $700 a foot, if not more. So that $1 million that we raised to do our stormwater projects doesn't go very far. We all understand that there is a problem. We do need to fix it. But we gotta figure out how to get people here to help fix it.
All right, thank you. We'll start with Rebecca. Question three, again with community priorities. Leavenworth is a city with a unique history and diverse community. How would you work to strengthen civic engagement and bring people together around shared goals?
Yeah, this is a super important question because there are a lot of organizations in town who constantly need volunteer help, volunteer support. There's a lot of nonprofits here. And so it is super important to make sure that we have an involved community so that we can focus on the priorities that we need to focus on. I think a large part of it is, as a City Commission, we need to continue to publicize these things and share how these things are helping our residents. Many hands make light work. So I think, I think getting people to engage in their community is actually kind of an underestimated problem in our communities because every organization I've talked to is short on volunteers and volunteer hours. Civic engagement does also mean interacting with your local politicians. There are a lot of politicians who don't hear a lot from their constituents, and that makes them unable to be held accountable. So we need to make it easier for residents to do that. And we also may need to make it easier for residents to line up what they have in terms of priorities to some organizations in the community. So I would love to increase like our databases and increase our active publicity of these organizations in town so that we can get people involved in civic engagement and projects in Leavenworth that mean a lot to everybody.
Thank you. Sam?
Can you ask that question again?
Leavenworth is a city with a unique history and diverse community. How would you work to strengthen civic engagement and bring people together around shared goals?
Okay, we have many non-taxable entities around here, like Ford, who I think we need to be more involved with, the VA, who I think we need to be more involved with. St. Mary's College, who, I mean, they do a pretty good job of reaching out. There is a lot of young kids up there that I think if we just inform the people, "Hey, we've got this going on. Come on out and have some community service, meet your community." Just talking to residents. Get people interested in it. I mean, show them why we're the first city. We were the gateway to the West. That's not something everybody else has. I mean, we were it. You stopped here and then you went on the Oregon Trail. And that's, that's pretty neat. That's cool. But we just need to help kind of bolster, boost the information out there on these new platforms. We've got TikTok and the old platform, Facebook, that kind of thing. Be more virtual with it because that's where a lot of the youth is going to. They're finding their information virtually. So let's, let's kind of bolster it more that way, too. Our elderly, they still get the newspaper. Let's throw it out there.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I think getting people involved is a key to our success. You know, we have a lot of unique things within our community, trails, parks, a pickleball court that draws from out of town pretty regularly. I competed in a Labor Day pickleball tournament. There's people as far as Emporia that were here as part of that group, over fifty, sixty people here. They came, they shocked, they were involved. Letting people know what's going on, where it's happening, and how to be involved is the key. Not everybody is on the computer, so we need to find other ways to get people involved. We have a larger elderly population, you know, what can we do to help them? And what things can we get involved with that will make their lives better and get them involved in our community? Like Sam said, there's a number of nonprofits around here that do a number of things that people are involved with. The Buffalo Bill, Historical Society puts on a Buffalo Bill evening that's really good, and we get a lot of people there. But there are a number of these events. And in finding ways to make sure people know about these things is the key. Using technology is one tool. The media, the newspaper, the television, those are all other tools that we can use to engage people and get them involved.
Awesome, thank you. All right, we're going to move into housing and development. The first question for housing is, housing affordability and availability are issues across Kansas. What steps would you support to ensure Leavenworth has a balance of affordable housing and sustainable growth? I think we're starting with Sam.
Oh, my school board friends are not going to like this, but RHIDs, TIPS, tax incentives. North Leavenworth could greatly benefit from that because a lot of those tax incentives and TIPS and RHIDs are used for infrastructure. North Leavenworth has the infrastructure already there. So that would be almost minimal if we did allow or, you know, decide to do something like that. And it would be kind of boosting what we already have, you know, redoing some of these houses or tearing down and building new. That would be a whole lot cheaper for a developer to do that and give us affordable housing and building a brand-new area. Because instead of dropping the cost of what it costs to develop it, which is putting your utilities, your roads, and your curb and gutter into the builder's cost, which would raise the house prices, we've already got it up here. So we're already taking some of that money out of it to keep it low, to keep it, you know, affordable for working-class people, for people who, you know, make fifty, sixty K a year, who could afford a house. And that would be something I'm going to push really hard for, is kind of the redevelopment in North Leavenworth. We've already got the infrastructure. Let's, let's do something.
Thank you, Joe.
We need a mix of affordable housing, new housing. It's a sad day when the $300,000 home isn't affordable housing. That's not bringing young people into our community. So we need some mixed housing. We need some multi-housing here that people can afford to live in and become part of the community. You know, it, Sam said it very well. The RHIDs are a tool to be used to bring in more development. RHID is Residential Housing Incentive District. And with the idea that the development would be, part of it would be compensated through our property tax for the not sexy part of development, which is the infrastructure. We've had a couple of these in South Leavenworth County that got turned down by our county commissioners. We have people that want to come here, and we're competing with other districts. We're competing with Johnson County, Lenexa, all those places that are using these tools to bring people in. And we need these tools to re, to help our downtown. We need these tools to help the north end. And we need to be able to have access to these tools to improve the community and make housing affordable.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I am a renter. I would love to own a house someday. That is a huge goal of mine. That would be amazing. Yeah, for sure. At all stages of life, we definitely need to focus on affordable housing. RHID, for those who don't know, is a tool where developers propose an RHID for a certain area, and they get the increase in property tax from that plot of land for a certain amount of time. They're all so different. It's another tool in our toolbox, so that's definitely something we need to consider. We also need to look at, there's, I met with Leavenworth Attainable Housing the other day, and there is a pilot program that is going to start soon to help abandoned houses get refurbished and be a part of reuse. And that beautifies the community, and it gives somebody a house. So we need to continue to look at programs like that. We also need to prioritize seniors as well. There are seniors in the community. I knew somebody who lives in this big house and literally only uses the lower floor because he can't afford to move. So we need to make sure that seniors have places to go when it's time and they're ready to downsize or live in a different community. That way, those houses can go to bigger families who might need to utilize the whole house, and the seniors can have safe places to live while on a fixed income. So we need to prioritize housing in all stages of life to make it affordable and accessible.
Great, thank you. All right, we want to move into Joe and public safety and quality of life. How would you approach funding and support for public safety, including police, fire, EMS, while balancing other community needs?
So that's a great question as well. Once again, we go back to, if we can't afford it, we can't do it. So the first initiative, do any of the things that we're working on, is we've got to grow the tax base. The city makes most of its revenue from sales tax, not from property tax. Over 22%, I believe, out of every dollar in sales tax, mil levy for sales tax comes to us. So it's important that if we want to pay our first responders, we want to take care of the public safety issues in our community, we've got to be able to afford it. It's, it's a necessity that our community grows and stops, stops the decline. I would prioritize our first responders because they're the ones that run into danger when those of us run away from it. And I think that they need to be compensated. We'll never be able to pay them the same that they make in Johnson County, but we need to make it competitive and give them a reason to stay within our community. When they leave our community to take these other jobs, a lot of times they move away, which causes a decline in the growth as well.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, I worked in human resources for a school district on post, and so I'm, you know, I have a lot of experience in staffing shortages, working in human resources for a school district. And in my experience, there are three things that you can do to attract staff and have them stay. You can pay people more. You can improve the working environment and working conditions. Or you can make them more passionate about the mission of what they're doing. The latter two, you know, the working environment for police, paramedics, and fire, that's a tough working environment. There's not ever going to be a ton that you can do to, besides, you know, just decreasing crime in general. That's a tou, they take on that risk. They already believe in their mission. Anybody who signs up to do something like that, for sure, believes in their mission. So the last option is to pay them more. So we need to find different incentives. We need to be creative about packaging Leavenworth. If it's not paying them more monetarily, how can we pay them more in terms of the experience that they can get in our town and the community that shows up for them? So we need to be creative about how we package Leavenworth. We also need to try to create room in that budget to pay them more. And that's only going to work by expanding our income. We have an income problem. And that's only going to work by economic development, which everybody's talking about today. But that is the absolute, as Sam said, that's the basis for all these questions. So it's definitely a huge priority for me in terms of public safety.
Thank you, Sam.
As Joe kind of said, the budget, here's the breakdown. It's 62% sales tax, 20% property tax, and the rest is the fines and fees that people pay the city. Okay, so we are a very high, I mean, we do not charge for that much of property tax. Everybody else does. We try to keep it at a nil. The only way we're going to get, because we are six officers down right now, I think, if they're correct?
Yeah, it's like five or six.
Five or six officers down, constantly posting. I don't know how far we are on firefighters or EMS, because EMS is more county. But the only way we can do it is we cannot compete with these bigger cities. They have more businesses. They have more residents. They have a bigger area to draw from. We have the fort to the north of us, the river to the east of us, Lansing to the south of us. The only way we can go west, we ain't got much room for growth. What we can do is develop what we have, redevelop what we have here, and try and get that tax base up so we can bring in those officers. We can pay them more. We can bring in more city staff if we get our tax base up. We can bring in businesses. We can get our tax base up. This is all linked to development and selling the city to people so they'll come and stay.
All right, thank you. And now we are on to our last question about collaboration and vision. And we start in with Rebecca.
Yeah, she did go for it.
Rebecca, city commissioners often need to work across differences to make progress. Can you share an example of the time you collaborated successfully with people who disagreed with you, and how that informs the way you would govern?
Yeah, absolutely. I think one of the best examples for me personally is my work at the Humane Society and being on the board there, you know. And organize, sometimes organizations, you can tell, oh, this one's probably going to be more left-leaning, this one's going to be more right-leaning. Animals, really, I mean, there are, there are so many different people who love animals and are passionate about that. And so the board is comprised of Republicans, Democrats, everybody in between. You know, there was a point where we were really struggling, and we were having issues with the county, and they, you know, they talked a lot with Vanessa Reed, and she was a good resource for us. Vanessa Reed and I personally, like, don't agree on a ton. But at the end of the day, she, she is an advocate for animals. And so I was like, yeah, absolutely, we need to reach out to her in any way possible and collaborate with anybody at the county. And so I really don't think it matters at the end of the day. I mean, everybody who I've talked to who's a part of this race, we all care about this city. And politics thus far really hasn't been much of an issue in this race, which is wonderful, because it's been able, we can share our ideas and we can collaborate. So that's a huge priority for me. I don't care who you are. If you want what's best for Leavenworth, then we can work together.
Thank you. Sam?
You go talk about collaboration. This race in itself has been so nice. We have everybody from both sides. Republican, Democrat, man of Kansas. It doesn't matter. We all see the problem. We're all... It doesn't matter. We all see the problem. We're all pretty much on the same page. I can usually work with most people, most everybody, because it's the only way you're gonna get something done. You have to be able to work both sides. There, there's no, there's no gray area to that. You're not gonna get all you want on this side and all you want on this side. There has to be something in the middle. You know, why do you think our government up top's feeling so bad? Because they quit working with each other. And that stopped in like the nineteen nineties. You can look at it from sixties all the way to nineties, there's everybody crossing both ways because it made sense for America. It made sense for the communities. Now it's polarized. You get one, maybe two people per-. I don't like that. I wanna be able to go to the county commission, hey, let's do this. What do you guys think? And if we can figure it out, we'll get it done. Or go to the school board. I like this. Let's, but why aren't we running with this, you know? Let's get the politics out of it. Let's take care of our people. I don't care about anything else but this town right now. This is my goal, to make it better, to make it sustainable, to bring a hospital back instead of an urgent care. We have to do these things. We're at the point of no return. Can we kick the can too much longer? That's it.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, in my work, it's, is a constant struggle to work with companies. I do IT work. And anytime it comes to technology, it's always about trying to convince a number of different people with different priorities how we can work together to solve the problem. At the end of the day, it's about listening to people. It's about not putting politics first. It's not about not putting what I want first, but listening to what people have to say, what's important to them, and meeting them where they are. I do this every day in my work life in technology, and I would continue to do this as a city commissioner. The best thing I think, or one of the bestest things that I do really well is I listen. I don't need to talk to hear myself talk. I don't need to talk to try to make myself important. I wanna hear what you have to say and what problem you're having and how can we come together to fix it. I can reach across the aisle. I've always been about people and not the party.
Great, thank you. We have now our closing statements, and I believe we're next with Sam, so you all start with the closing statements and you have ninety seconds.
I'll make this really quick and easy. Come out and vote on November fourth. You know, guys, we need, we need to get some work done. I'm willing to do the work. I'm willing to be the workhorse. I'm blue collar, so that's what I do for a living, six to six every day. Not a problem. I don't care how much longer I gotta stay up to make something right. Just come out and vote. Vote with your gut. Usually it does not lead you astray. Your gut usually tells you who you want. Plain and simple. Hope to see you guys out there.
Thank you. Jim?
This is, this is gonna be a hard election for a lot of people because there are a lot of great candidates running. Each of us brings something different to the table. At one forum we were at, they asked us to talk about was, we have a lot of same ideas, what's actually different to how it is. The thing that unites us all, though, is our love for this community and our ability to put the people above everything else. I would ask you to look at every person running, make the best decision for you, and come out and vote on November fourth.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, I echo what everybody said. It's been a wonderful race. It's so important to vote. The one thing we really didn't get to today was a lot of the specifics about how to increase economic development. Just really briefly, I think we need to fill that business and technology park. I think we need to revitalize downtown, and there are different ideas on how to do that. I am an avid communicator. I love this town. I used to write a column for the newspaper when I was fifteen and then when I was twenty-two. And I, the community raised me. I really didn't think anybody cared what I had to say, but they did. And so now I feel so empowered and so grateful to be able to give back to this community. So please vote on November fourth. Please take the time to educate yourself about all candidates. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to serve the city in this way. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much for answering our questions and coming to our forum, and we look forward to the results in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.